The flag of the United States is more than just a piece of cloth sewn together in a red, white, and blue design. Stands for freedom and those who have fought to defend that freedom. It is the emblem of the greatest nation on earth. Attention, will the audience please rise? Color guards present colors. Hand salute. Color guards post colors. Color guard salute. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard dismissed, you may be seated.
Boy Scouts, well done, well done. Uh, let's start our meeting off with a roll call.
Councillor Shalata.
Here.
Dadi, Demis.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
Windorf.
Here.
Alter.
Here.
Wes.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. And council, our first order of business, approve of the minutes from the city council meeting held November 5th, 2000.
Mayor.
Councilman Shalata.
Those minutes, November 5th, 2009.
We do have a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting of November 5th, 2009. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on our agenda, um, it's my honor to have invited, uh, a very distinguished individual to our meeting tonight, um, yeah. Um, Mr. Dave Pedrizi. Uh, Dave has been in this community for long as we can ever remember, and you probably have seen him around town, uh, spending his time picking up after others in our community, uh, cans, trash, um, for as long as I can remember. Uh, he serves a lot of time, uh, uh, volunteers time in his church and pretty much anything and where needed. Um, if you can imagine, um, Dave was employed with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for sixty-one years, sixty-one years. Um, so talk about work ethic. So I felt, um, um, uh, that it was very important to, um, now that Dave is retired and he has some time, he's not out serving others, to come down here and spend a little bit of time with us at, yeah, city council meeting and, uh, just honor him for all the work. Dave, you've just done an outstanding job for Rock Springs. And, um, uh, over the many years have made this community a much better place to live, uh, a cleaner place to live, and I would hope that you, uh, uh, as you, uh, were a role model, um, shared some of your work ethics with, um, some of those in our community. So we, we had a, a little, um, plaque, um, made up, and the plaque reads, "To an outstanding citizen, David Pedrizi, as a symbol of our appreciation for your commitment to the city of Rock Springs by going above and beyond every day, cleaning up our city and volunteering wherever and whenever possible. We thank you for adding to the strength of our community." And this is dated the ninth day of November, 2019, by myself in the city council. And we sure appreciate everything that you, um, just been a, a pillar in this community as far as stewardship and, um, leadership, uh, commitment, making Rock Springs a better place. So thank you very much for coming down here, and, uh, this is the very least we could do. Thank you. When do we give this, and I'm gonna let you say a few words as it is? Oh, Dave, it's not over. Dave, give us a few words.
Okay, Mayor, thank you very much. First of all, I would like to thank all that were involved in me being here tonight, um. I appreciate the recognition, and I hope that, uh, I can share this recognition in such a way that there will be others inspired to serve the city of Rock Springs or all of our great country that the Boy Scouts are representing tonight. And I didn't do this alone. Nobody does, well, first of all, sixty-one years with the Highway Department alone. I wanna thank, uh, my supervisors from out there for, um, making that employment continuously possible. I wanna recognize my brother behind your stand-up Fred. You see, he's backing me up even tonight. And also, one of the big parts of my cleanup work, I had the pleasure of working with, uh, Gleneese Windorf, one of your own people. She works tirelessly also to keep Rock Springs a, a beautiful place, a place that people like to come. Uh, so don't forget Gleneese, uh. One of the jobs that I do, uh, there's a lot of, uh, one-and-outs or three-and-outs if you're a football fan, and, uh, Gleneese was certainly not one-and-out, not certainly three-and-out. She, as I say, she is persistent and, uh, an inspiration even to me to continue on with that phase of my work because that can get kinda, as I say, with the one-and-outs that you deal with, that can get tiresome at times. So also, I wanna thank all the members of the council who present themselves to, uh, be candidates and service in office. It's, you do a lot to make, Rock Springs didn't just happen, it's here because of people like you, and I invite you all to continue your good work and remember why you're here and continue on, and if I provided a little inspiration for you, that's great, so much the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I'll tell ya, Dave, we do plan, once Councilwoman Windorf hits her sixty years with the city, we are gonna get her a plaque. That's, that's already into work, if we can find it in the budget. Um, and that being said, um, I actually, um, had one individual, I have several things on my list to do, this was one of them, and then I got a phone call a little while back by, um, Dorothy Radosovich, who really spurred me. I ran into Fred, uh, we were, we were getting our haircut, and I started saying, "What's Dave doing?" He said, "Oh, he's bored to death. He's got a lot of things on his list." And I said, "Well, I wanna get him down to a council meeting and, and, um, just let you know how much we appreciate all the years you've put in." And I wanna say with YDOT, the longest-term employee ever, correct?
Correct, for the whole state, not only YDOT, but for a long time, there was a lady from, uh, the livestock board that was kind of a competitor, but...
You, you wore her out.
She went by the wayside.
Well, we're honored that you, uh, found your way to Rock Springs, and we're sure proud to have you in our community and, and as one of our citizens. You've, uh, you've done an outstanding job, and we, we sure thank you for coming down tonight. And Fred, thanks for bringing down and, um, and, uh, participating. And we, we sure won't make you sit through this entire meeting, but you're sure more than welcome to if you, if you'd like. Um, we are going to move on with our presentations and proclamations section of our agenda, and the first thing we have, the city of Rock Springs fiscal year 2019 audit presentation, McGee, Hernan, Pies.
This feels like it's right up in my face. Mayor, council members, thanks for having me tonight. Um, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Amber Neus, and I think I've spoken in years past with most of you at this, um, meeting, but, um, I'm the partner at McGee, Hernan, Pies for the external auditors for the city. So I'm here tonight to report on the fiscal year nineteen, um, audit that we completed for the city. And as I usually do, um, I take about ten minutes, I'd say, and go through the deliverables that we have for you, um, and as I'm going through, if you have any questions, um, please feel this, please feel free to stop and ask me. Hopefully, I won't bore the Boy Scouts to death, or you guys to death, um, but I'll try and, um, keep it quick and touch on the highlights. Um, so generally speaking, our audit process went very smoothly again this year. Um, we always appreciate the help of, um, Matt, Alex, April, and the whole accounting staff who worked tirelessly to answer all of our questions, um, and help make sure the audit process goes smoothly. So thanks to them for all the help. Um, and then I'll just dive now into the reports, which I think you have electronically, um, in front of you, and the first of our deliverables to you is on pages one and two of the big, um, audit report and financial statements. And this letter is our independent auditor's report, so it, um, gives you an opinion on whether we believe the financials are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And what you, um, received was what's called an unmodified opinion. That's another way of saying it's a clean opinion, that's exactly what you wanna see, so great results there. Um, then, moving on through the report, um, following our auditor's opinion is the management's discussion and analysis, which is pages three through eleven. I'd encourage you to read through that, um, when you have time. It, it includes some operational highlights and comparatives. The rest of the financial statements are only single-year, so it's kinda hard for you to compare maybe how the city's improved or whatnot from the year before, um, so that management's discussion and analysis is handy. Um, then, I'll just touch on a couple of the financial, um, highlights from June thirty, twenty nineteen. Um, page twelve is called the statement of net position, and that's really the balance sheet for the city as of June thirtieth, and this, um, statement of net position is on a full accrual basis, so that's what you'd use, be used to seeing in a for-profit company. It presents both short-term and long-term assets of the city, um, and it splits the activities between the governmental activities, which in the city's case is the general fund, compared to the business-type activities, which is water, wastewater, and housing. Um, so total assets were just over two-hundred-and-twenty-two million, um, total liabilities were just shy of fifty-nine million, and the net position, which is another word for equity of the city at June thirty, was about one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-nine million, of which about twelve-point-six million was called unrestricted, which means it wasn't spoken for either tied up in infrastructure or, um, restricted by some external party. Um, so those are some of the highlights there. Page thirteen is referred to as the statement of activities, this is the income statement for the year on that same full accrual basis. Um, under that basis, the city's, um, net position increased just under a million dollars, um, which is, uh, very favorable compared to fiscal year eighteen, which if you were to pull that report out, it showed a nine-point-two million dollar decline. Um, so the results, um, were much, much more positive this year, um, just in the expenditure categories, public safety expenditures went down the most, and that all relates to, um, the participation in the Wyoming retirement system, which I feel like every year I'm here, I talk a lot about the Wyoming retirement system and the, the liabilities, um, that arise on the city's balance sheet relating to that. Um, but there were some pretty, pretty big shifts in the actuarial valuation of the law enforcement pension plan, and it became much more underfunded, and so all that expense, basically, um, to kind of shift up your liability for your underfunded portion of that law enforcement plan hit public safety, and that's really what the increase in the expense on this statement's attributed to. Um, you'll see a big, um, decline in the water expenses as well. Um, the prior-year activity included, um, quite a bit relating to the twenty-inch water transmission line, so those I think are the big shifts there. Um, general sales and use tax went up about four percent from the year before as well. And if you move on to page fourteen, that's the balance sheet under what's called the modified accrual basis of accounting, and that's a much shorter-term position, it's got a shorter-term focus, you're not gonna see, um, fixed assets or long-term debt on that, and it just presents the general fund. Um, so the only thing I'll touch on there is the bottom section of that page is called fund balance, that's the equity for this type of accounting basis that they're following here. Um, that fund balance, um, has a few different categories, and it kinda is handy, I think, for you to look at, 'cause it outlines what's spoken for, um, already within that pot of equity, um, and so you'll see there that the, um, total's fund balance is thirty-nine million, and about almost fourteen million of it, it's referred to as unassigned, which means it's not either spoken for through some external restriction or by, uh, some kind of commitment that you've made as a council, um, to reserve that money or set it aside for some purpose. Um, if you move on to page sixteen, that's the income statement under that, um, basis of accounting for the general fund, um, total fund balance went up about five-point-seven million for the year. Um, most of the categories were pretty consistent, I don't think there's anything, um, too much to, to highlight for you there. If you continue through, um, pages eighteen through twenty-one have much more detailed information, if you wanna look at water compared to wastewater, um, and compared to the housing funds, um, they're split out in detail in those pages. And then if you keep moving forward, um, page twenty-two through twenty-six outlines all the accounting policies, um, of the city, nothing, um, significant to point out there. Twenty-seven and twenty-eight, which is footnote two, outlines all the cash. Um, so consistent with years past, the cities, um, held most of their cash and investments in, um, bank deposits, CDs, and government agency bonds, all of which, um, in the bond category are rated triple-A or the most safe, um, rating, and we also do take a look at whether the cash is fully collateralized or insured, um, at a hundred percent in accordance with Wyoming State statute, and we did, uh, conclude that it was, um, in our testing, so good results there, as there's about sixty-six million of cash at the city at year end. If you ha, um, hop to page thirty-five, um, this is the page that has some interesting details about that Wyoming retirement system liability. So, um, as of June thirtieth, the total liability for the city was about forty-one-point-seven million. Um, that's split up between the employees that are covered by the public employee plan versus law enforcement, and then there's two fire plans, Fire Plan A and B. Interestingly enough, the Fire Plan A, which is the closed fire plan, is significantly underfunded, and that is, um, almost half of that forty million dollars. Um, about fourteen million of the forty, um, is the public employee plan, and then the rest is wrapped up in Fire B and law enforcement. Um, there's a table there on page thirty-five that shows the, um, the city's proportionate share of the total Wyoming retirement system plan for each of those types of plans. So, um, for example, in the public employee plan, the city's staff that fall under that plan represent point-four-seven percent of the total public employee plan at the state level. Um, so it's interesting that that point-four-seven percent, which is very small, equates to a fourteen-point-three million dollar liability, so, um, that's pretty significant numbers we're dealing with there. Um, if you hop to page thirty-seven, um, this shows you also the kind of volatility or sensitivity in those liabilities that are on the balance sheet. Uh, because it's an actuarial valuation, um, it relies heavily on some of the assumptions used by the actuaries, including the discount rate, um, for the investments, um, and all the numbers, um, at the Wyoming retirement system itself, and so this table shows you how, um, how much the liability would go up or down if they just assumed the discount rate went up one percent or down one percent. So, um, this, the whole point of that table is to show you, um, it could be a volatile liability if they do change the assumptions. And pa, page forty-four, I'll hop to that, this, um, includes some interesting information on the other post-employment benefit plan that the city offers, um, which is, as you know, um, the retiree health insurance, um, plan and the, um, the allowability of retirees to stay on the health insurance plan if they pay their, the premiums. Um, that implicit subsidization of the retirees is equal to a liability under the accounting standards, and an actuarial evaluation is done, um, which the city hires, um, an actuary to do, and that came out at two-point-six million dollars, um, of a liability there. If you jump to pages forty-seven through forty-nine, uh, the only thing I wanted to highlight here was that, um, this is the general fund budget-to-actual comparison, so, uh, we do check to make sure the, the city didn't overexpend, um, any, in any of its legal levels of budgetary authority, um, in the general fund, and we found, um, no overages there, so that's good news. And, um, I would just highlight as well, pages fifty-two through fifty-five, um, if you do care to look at some more of the specific information on those four different Wyoming retirement systems plans, there's trend information on those four pages for, um, the last six years for each plan, and so it'll show you how the districts or the, the city's share has, um, went up or down each year, what the liability for the city has been under each plan for each year, and what the, um, funded status of the plan is each year, which I find interesting. So, um, for example, the funded status of the public employee plan dropped from seventy-six percent in fiscal year eighteen down to sixty-nine percent, so that seven percent drop, um, is resulting in a higher liability on your books. Um, Fire Plan A, um, is only funded at, um, just under thirty percent, which is why that liability's so high. Um, so interesting data there. Um, page sixty-two is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, so, um, as you know, our audit is kinda comprised of two pieces, one's us looking at the federal dollars specifically, and the other piece is us looking at the financial statements. Um, in terms of the federal dollars, because the city is considered to be a low-risk audit E, um, and to achieve that designation, the city had to have no significant or material findings in either of the last two years. Um, but with that low-risk designation, we're only required to audit twenty percent of all the federal dollars that were expended, um, through the city, as opposed to forty percent if the city were to be high-risk. Um, so in order to achieve that twenty percent, um, audit rate, we, um, tested this year the abandoned mine land reclamation program. Um, I'm sure April was happy because this meant for the first year in a long time, we did not actually audit a housing program. Um, so usually, the housing ones have been, um, on the significant side in years past, so AMLR came on the, on the schedule this year, and we took a look at that as, as what we refer to as the major program. Um, and in regards to that federal compliance testing, we do issue to you an opinion on whether that major program, that AMLR program, um, was compliant with all the direct and material, um, compliance requirements that the federal government issues in regards to that program, and you'll find that opinion, um, on page sixty-six. This is one of our other letters to you, and that is an unmodified or clean opinion on that program, so that's good results there. And then in addition to looking at the compliance, we also do look at the internal controls over financial reporting of that AMLR program, and we would have to report to you as a city council, any deficiencies that we'd find in internal controls over that program, if they were significant or material. Um, and the good news that you'll see on page sixty-seven is we identified none, um, so it was clean in terms of internal controls and processes, and we have nothing to report to you there. Um, just to take a quick step back, the, the last letter that we, um, issued to you in this financial package is on pages sixty-four and sixty-five, and this is, um, the auditing standards we have to comply with, government auditing standards while auditing the city, require us to look at the internal controls over financial reporting of the city as a whole, not just specific to the federal program, but this one is more encompassing of the city as a whole, as well as the compliance, um, with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, and we report our results to you in this letter. So similar to the federal piece, um, we're having to report to you any deficiencies in internal control if they're significant or material, and we had none to report to you this year, um, so good results there. And in terms of the compliance piece, we'd have to include in our report any non-compliance that's material, um, and we identified no such non-compliance, so again, a very, very clean report there. Um, that touches on everything I wanted to cover in the financial report, and our only other deliverable to you is a separate letter, um, which I believe you probably have as a separate PDF document, um, and it's referred to as our audit committee letter, and that letter, um, simply includes items we're required to report to you under our professional standards in your role as those charged with governance. Um, just to touch on a few of those highlights, um, in terms of accounting policies, um, used by the city, the city did adopt one new accounting standard, um, it's referred to as GASB number eighty-nine, um, and it actually was early implemented, 'cause it's not required to be implemented yet by the government auditing standards or accounting standards board, um, but it actually is one of the very nice standards we've had recently, 'cause it saves work, um, for the accountants as opposed to causing more work, which is what most of the standards do. In this, um, new standard, the requirement to capitalize interest, um, that the city incurs, um, during construction projects went away. So rather than, um, the accounting staff having to calculate the interest capitalization, they just, you can put it all through the income statement and, and expense it all. Um, so that was adopted and reflected in this fiscal year nineteen report, so that's good news. Um, we didn't identify any significant or unusual transactions. If you flip to the second page of the letter, we do list there the three estimates that we consider to be significant that are in the city's financial statements, we're required to bring these to your attention because, um, the nature of an estimate is obviously prone to subjectivity or bias, so we take an extra special look at those, um, when we're doing the audit. The three estimates, um, on the city's books, um, include the liability for estimated unpaid claims, which an actuary, um, at the third-party administrator, um, assists in calculating, and then the, um, two retirement-related liabilities, one for the Wyoming retirement system pension plans, and the second, um, for the other post-employment benefit plan, which I alluded to earlier in terms of the retiree health insurance. Um, the audit was very clean, we didn't identify any adjustments, um, on our side. Um, there were adjustments that were made after the trial balances were initially provided to us, but that was just cleanup identified by the accounting staff and, um, no errors identified by us. Um, we had no disagreements with management, um, we're not aware of any consultations management had with other accountants, and no significant issues or difficulties, um, encountered in performing the audit. So, again, I just, um, say thanks again to Matt, Alex, and April, and all the staff that helped us with the audit process, and we very much appreciate the relationship, um, and the smooth audit process that continues year after year. So, um, with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Counsel, would you like Amber to repeat that? I just would like to also reiterate that I commend that Alex, April, and your staff for a great report and appreciate the working relationship we've always had with you both. Glad to see it came up. I have the utmost confidence in these individuals. Counsel? No questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it. Amber knows her stuff, too. Next up, we're sure glad that we passed that. Item number two is the Third Amended and Restated Joint Powers Telecommunication Board Agreement. We have Tim Knight, the IT Director, and John DeLeon, Deputy County Attorney for Sweetwater County. Give us a little presentation. Turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, John. Apparently couldn't make it tonight, so you just have me. All right, so wish me luck. On two thousand and one, the Joint Powers Telecom Board was formed between the City of Green River and the City of Rock Springs to create a fiber network to help government entities have internet connectivity and improve broadband in the community. The county has been a customer of that from the beginning. There's been a lot of interest at the state level and at the local level to improve broadband as part of economic development. And so the county is interested in becoming a member of that board. And so we feel that the board is, or that that connection is extremely important to us. It needs to be reliable, and it has been very good for us. And we continue to be grateful for that. And we'd like to have a voice at the table because of its importance. It's important that it works well because public safety sits on that network. And because of that, and I think in the interest of the board and the two cities, the county has resources that can add to and strengthen that agreement. We have a full IT staff, we have grant writers, and we have like engineering and other resources that we feel could benefit, which is why it might be important to the cities as well. And so we've put together a draft agreement to present for comments and feedback so that we can kind of move forward and join the board and just make it better. I think they've done an excellent job, and there's no complaints. It's just we want to strengthen that. And so I bring it to you to do that. That's, I don't know if there's any questions or concerns or comments or...
Councilman Halter? Great board. Lot of struggles that we have. It's a six. So... As far as the... Right now our school is... Broad. City. All listed. So... Add. Grant some. Work. It's me. Got it. Stop. See you. To review. City. Honor?
Councilman West?
Tim, where was the three hundred thousand contribution? Where did that number come from as far as accounting buy-in?
Well, that's kind of a guesstimate, I guess, of the initial contribution at current market value. And I think it's three hundred thousand and change. Where I just went to three hundred thousand was the idea that we would also be giving in-kind type of services and helping in that regard. So it just made sense to me to just round it down, round it to three hundred thousand and make it a number we can do. But if that number needs to change, I think we're open to that. That's just a number to... Yeah.
By in-kind, you mean fixing the audio visual in the council chambers?
I don't know how the board's related to that, but whatever.
Thanks.
You bet.
Mr. Knight, do we have, Councilman Halter, do you have any idea what our assets or worth at this point? Do we have a value on the asset? As far as fiber in the ground? Well, Tim, I think this is a great opportunity. I think that the county has some great resources that could utilize. It'd be much easier had the county opted to jump in at the very beginning of this process. Just a couple little things, because I'm sure we're all going to go through some discussions. Do you have a hard copy?
I do.
Page, well, no page, but how about section seven?
Okay.
In the middle of that first paragraph, it said the board shall be responsible for establishing and maintaining an annual budget for the... What? Just, is that for the joint power or the county and the city?
I think it's for the system, but for the, let's see.
I'm sure just something was left out.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We didn't touch that section, I don't think, when we did it, but we must have.
Do you think it's supposed to say the system?
Let's see.
It refers to the operation.
For the operations and probably. Nineteen... Yeah, I mean...
And then in section ten...
We'll verify that, yeah.
Just a concern, and it kind of spells it out a little bit. This area has been kind of, since the Second Amendment's been reworded and worked over quite a bit in the termination dissolution distribution, where before it was Rock Spring, Green River, and it was fifty percent, fifty percent. Now we're talking thirty-three and a third, thirty-three and a third, thirty-three and a third, the three hundred thousand dollar buy-in. That was my concern on the estimation of value of assets. Should tomorrow the county jump in and the board is dissolved at that time? I think it has some language in there after ten years, but how does that work on dissolution? As far as divvying up the asset? Not to say that would ever happen, but it's something that we would have to consider.
And this was the section that we really struggled with, too, so...
Yeah, I see it's really been worked over from previous.
Right, well, the idea was is that, well, the city's made a significant contribution, and the county has not made any contribution. And so at dissolution, the county really shouldn't have any claim on any assets unless they become partners in the system. So the idea was is that we need to buy into the system in some form. Now, that form could be through grant funds over time, or... It doesn't make a lot of sense, I think, to just give money to that board who's financially okay to run as it is. But there are probably projects down the road that it will make sense for us to get involved in, to bring grant money to the table or to do something that might strengthen that network. And so the idea was to try to create a buy-in that was representative of what the cities did initially. And then recognize that, hey, over time, by just being part of the board and doing all the work and being that, that we would just be part of it just over time. So I tried to make it simple so we didn't have to go back and try to work a bunch of numbers that, you know, just to try to make it so it was a fairly simple thing to understand whether we were in or not.
And then at the end of that, section ten, that paragraph five B was removed? What was the logic? What drove that entire section A to be removed? Do you know?
I do not, because that was a line-out by the board attorney when we got the copy. The prevailing party is at the part that you're talking about? So...
Yes.
So we left it alone just to let it get resolved by going back to the original agreement. So I don't know if it's supposed to be there or not. That's...
Is that correct?
Yeah.
That makes sense. If I may?
Yeah.
Mayor? Counsel? Rick? I believe... Left out?
Well, my big, not big issue, but this paragraph didn't exist in the last iteration. So it was added and deleted?
I think it was deleted, and we got a copy of one that still had the line-out on it. So I'm guessing it's not supposed to be there. So we'll leave it out.
And then could you explain, Tim, if, could the three hundred thousand dollars in his actual or grant fund? Can you explain how that would work? It's not actual, then, then the board would actually request a grant from...
So if we use our grant writer to acquire grant funds for the board, then we want that to count towards a contribution.
Count towards any other? Councilman Hammond?
What's the question?
We have auditors. Next that for the record. So the three hundred thousand dollars, would if we were to use Christina, that does?
Yeah.
Do you, and don't get me wrong, I think this is a great idea, opportunity for all three entities to have the county board, not only for the IT staff that you guys have, but whether it's grant writing capabilities or not. I'm just, I'm going to have to take some time. When are we looking at? Because there's no sunset date on this schedule.
Correct. And we're presenting this to the City of Green River at their December third meeting.
So we have some...
And then we'll come back to both councils, and we'll take whatever feedback that you want to give and then bring that to the commission. We'll just negotiate this out and figure it out. I think we're open to talk about whatever.
Sounds good. Okay?
So... Ask for it. Ask. Seven. Two. Three. Four. Okay, I remember going through that during the budget. Questions?
Tim, thanks. I think it's a great opportunity for everybody. We'll hash through this and come up with any input, comments, revisions, suggestions, and then we'll get together.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Okay, this is going to bring us to the petition section of our agenda, where I will ask if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to address the governing body on any issue whatsoever. This would be your time, so... You have to come up here, state your name, for the record, if you would. For the record.
Hi, hi, guys. For the record, I'm Louz, and I just wanted to let everyone know we are having a public health emergency. And we have to take action because if we don't, people are going to be dead. So I just came to tell you guys that in person, and that's all. And I don't know what to do from here on, because I'm not, I don't know what, I'm nobody, you guys. I'm a zero. So from here on, you guys gotta, we have to do something because normally people don't do this. But we are not going to let people control our community. I'm sorry, but we are going to control our community, and we're going to ensure that everyone's safe and healthy. And we're not going to allow people to, I don't know how long this has been going on, but I'm assuming it's been going on for a real long time. And if you guys just want to go to Facebook, and you want to go somewhere, and you want to see how many people in one minute can say seventy-three comments to protect our teachers, to do something like that? Oh, I want you guys to know that this community needs our help, and I need your help because I, I'm communicating with everyone every single day, and I'm not getting feedback. So I'm not asking for feedback, if it's going to be bad feedback, if it's not going to be productive. But anyone can give their feedback, like it's freedom of speech. I just want you guys to know, we're having a public emergency. Some people are on, some people...
What is?
What's the public emergency? Well, the public emergency is that people are dying from drugs, okay? So if they cannot get the right medication from a doctor, and if they are not getting the medication they need, or whatever's happening, we have to assure that they are getting the care they need because other people are not strong, and some of them are doing things that I don't do. So I'm not really here to talk for those people. I'm here to talk for myself. And I'm taking medication on a daily basis that I get prescribed to me, and it's not working. So I have to say that, whether people like what we have to do. We have to do something that's going to be something that I've been saying all over the internet. And I'm not going to say it right here because, you know what? I don't need people judging me. They already do. I just want you guys to know that I don't care what people think, and...
Let's back up just a minute. People are dying from drugs.
People are dying from heroin, people are dying from, I don't know what they're dying from because it doesn't ever say, they don't usually say people are ODing. They're just saying they're having accidental deaths. But now it's coming out. So, I mean, I don't care about that because, you know what? I don't do that. But I do care that people are dying. I do care that I have to go and get the cops called on me because I go to make a doctor's appointment because they prescribe me narcotics that are worse than any narcotic you could ever have. And then when I refuse to have that narcotic, they call the cops, okay? I don't care, I'm not going to no more doctors. I'm just saying I have my medication, I've been having, I don't even want no feedback, I'm just going to leave. But I just, I'm kind of intense, and people might think I'm crazy. Well, I'm not crazy, okay, guys? I'm sane, I care about everyone in this community, and I feel it is my job to come here and speak for everyone because nobody can speak for theirself. Nobody. But I can. So I'm here to speak for everyone, but mostly just for myself right now. Because if I can't have someone care about, I can't care about everyone, I have to care about me. I'm okay, I'm not going to harm myself or others, but yes, I am disabled right now, okay? So when I say disabled, that means that I am not able to do the things like be a police officer, like I want to be, or do things that are what normal people do. On a daily basis, I cannot show up forty hours a week. But when I'm here, I'm here twenty-four seven. So if you guys need me, find me, I'm there. Go to Google questions.
Let me, let me just ask you something. Do you think you showed up at this meeting tonight to let us know that people are dying from heroin and narcotics? Because we had no idea?
We're having a public healthcare emergency. No, it's not that you don't know, it's that we don't know what to do. And we are assuming, and we are knowing that you guys are on the team of the people, you know? And we are the people, we're for the people, the government's for the people. And there's a lot of people that don't care about the government in this town. And trust me, I will take the, I will take whatever they got to say. Because you know what? If you post something that has a police on their site, oh, man, you don't even know what's going to happen to you, you know? There's people that don't care about the government. I care about the government because I somehow got involved in it. But, you know, I'm not very happy with some of the things that have happened between the government that has nothing to do with you guys, you know? Or maybe, not now, because that... Or maybe, not now, because that was when you guys were-
So, let me ask you a question. What do you want the city council to do?
What can we do to assure that people are not being controlled by very psychos? I'm not controlled by those people, I'm just saying, what are we gonna do, because like-
Are you referring to the psychos as being the doctors?
No, not the doctors, the doctors are part of this group, but they're not psychos, no, they're just doing their job, going to work. They go to work every day, but when someone goes there and tells them-
Let's, let's concentrate on who's doing the controlling.
Well, let's see, um, do you guys know who's doing the controlling?
Who?
The media, do you guys know who the media is?
Yeah, they're, they're here.
No, not that media. I'm talking about like the media, like YouTube. Do you guys know who, um, the singers are in the town? Do you guys know who those people are?
I could assure you, we probably know a heck of a lot more than you are giving us credit.
I don't know nothing, that's why I'm here, because you guys know, I don't know. So, that's why I'm asking, why are you asking me? You know, I'm just here to tell you guys that if I tell you guys it's a public emergency, and you see my face, that's because there's a big problem, and if you guys don't wanna solve it, I don't need you to solve it, we are a team, we all have to solve it. The county, the people, the government, the law enforcement, everybody, that is not the drug dealers, do you understand? Or the doctors, because the doctors are doing their job as much as they can. But there's certain things that they cannot do, because they're part of the media too. They're all a big clan, and I'm not part of their clan, because I was born and raised there, and I don't have to do what they say, just like you.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm gonna let you go, but-
We appreciate your comments-
Thank you, I'm not very nice right now.
We worked day in and day out, uh-
It's not your guys' job to do this, I just came to tell you.
Trying to combat the problem that we have.
How are we gonna combat it if we don't do anything? It's not doing, you're guys' job to do anything, the police have to work, they work every single day catching these people, going and sure babysitting, they're babysitting, really, and you know, they do good.
Let's, don't go down this again, what's, what's your solution?
My solution would be that we're gonna have to legalize some stuff, we're gonna have to do some things that people are not gonna like, because you know what? We're not gonna allow heroin to take our town down. We've already got seven deaths already here, that I know, that are people that grew up with me and went to school around, not, they didn't hang out with me, but they're dead. So, if that's seven people that were born and raised here are dead-
So, your answer is to legalize?
Might, yes, we have to legalize two things, and if people don't, we already have one of them legal, but the thing about it is, it's not legal, because it's illegal. So, we have disoxin, that has to be legal, whether people have an opinion about it or not, it's already legal. But if we cannot allow our DEA to do their job, 'cause they are doing it, no matter what, um, we cannot successfully be a team and work together. So, the people that are authorized with the DEA to do what they do, they're already doing it, but they're doing so bad that they're controlling people, I don't know what they're doing. I just know that when I'm in charge of that, part of that, it's gonna be okay, everything is gonna be okay, because you know what?
I, I don't know what, right now, I'm, I've, I've been chasing, I feel like I've been chasing my tail in a circle.
This subject, I'm just gonna have to say, we're gonna, I don't agree with THC, but I do know that we have to allow something that calms people, that is not opiates, that are not pills, that are not serquel, you know, that are not prescribed, because I have all the prescriptions that you can ask, I have, they prescribe me everything. And you think I take those serquels that are three hundred milligrams every single day? No, I'd rather stay up than get knocked out and be dead.
Okay.
Your honor, I think our three minutes are up.
I, yeah, I-
Thank you, your honor.
I do appreciate your comments, and-
Well, I don't really care what you guys think, if you like me or not, because you know what? If it was your daughter, you would be doing something about it. If it was your son, you would assure that they were safe, and you would assure-
Lou, we got the message.
Bye, thank you, have a good night.
We will, we will, uh-
I don't know what to do, I just think it's just-
I hear you.
I just wanna know that I'm helping here, and you're fixing places that I see online, started to put down, whatever I want, everyone, and I, I'm ready to go in.
Okay.
If you invited everyone to come, and I was, that was, that's, nobody, so, I don't know. I just know that I'm not okay, 'cause I'm not in, and I'm not able to sometimes, it's, it's not okay. So, I have to care about something, but it's not really, it's not really, and we did allow it, so-
We wish you the best, we will, um, continue to fight that battle.
Well, this is meant to be on this, uh, here, so, I'm not talking about other stuff, I'm, but I can, if you-
Okay, thank you.
And Boy Scouts, like, so, we're so proud of you. And don't ever, don't ever take that, I don't want.
Okay, Lou, we have a meeting to run. Boy Scouts, let this be a lesson to you, right now, okay? Stay away from that stuff. This is not good, you see it in action, and, and, uh, I commend you for the, the, uh, direction that you're going, but, um, these things happen, we had a long talk about in my office earlier, earlier about, uh, issues we deal with in this community that are day-to-day issue, and, uh, we, in my opinion, manage it well, but take the right path. I'm afraid to ask, but I'm going to, is there anyone else wishing to address the council on it? I'd like to say any issue, but maybe we should discuss the issue. Anybody? Hearing none? Boy, the stories the scouts are gonna say when they get home.
Exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, I'm gonna close the petition sections, we're gonna move on to the officers and staff reports, councillors. We have, uh, item number one, the health insurance fund recap for October two thousand nineteen, and two, the financial report summary for October two thousand nineteen. Uh, I entertain a motion to approve the officers' staff reports and place on file.
So moved, your honor.
Would we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have scared them out. Enjoy your evening, and thank you for coming, you did a great job. Um, this can bring us to the council committee and board reports, we have one, the Rock Springs Historical Museum Board Meeting Minutes of October ninth, two thousand nineteen. And I would ask at this time, are there any other, uh, council committees or board reports that need to be added at this time?
Your honor-
Councilman Tate.
Just giving an update, um, about the historical following on as we enter the holiday season. Um, Saturday, November thirtieth is the start of Small Business Saturday, and so, anyone that's interested in participating in that, you can stop at ten AM, pick up a bag at the museum. Um, they'll take delivery of letters to Santa starting that day, and at two o'clock, visits with Santa started. So, those are all on Saturday, November thirtieth, for our next meeting, also on Monday, December second, Marguerite Santa, annual appearance at the museum. Yep, so, everyone that hasn't seen it for a year, look back out, and, um, she runs the college. So, that's just what the-
Thank you, Councilman Tate. Any others?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
It's not much of an update, but, uh, I just wanna let you know, in regards to six, and it's been a while since we talked about that. Uh, the latest conversation I had, which was actually for our last meeting, was that the commissioners are gonna invite us, uh, invite us back over and, once again, um, kind of on an individual, per municipality basis, kind of like their budget requests that they normally have. So, um, I don't have a date yet, they're still working on that apparently, but soon, any with our finding, or I guess our request, but, um, you might recall, after the last presentation, I had mentioned that like priority list is as far as what sponsorships that we've agreed to sponsor at this time, so, I think probably in the really near future, perhaps the next meeting, probably prioritize sponsorships that we're agreed to.
Uh, councillor West, um, first, from what I understand, with speaking with Commissioner, um, Smith, uh, that date is most likely gonna be December fifth at one thirty.
It's good to know.
And I, uh, also had some discussion with the commissioner about reduction of, uh, of the, uh, overall amount, and it's just my own opinion. Um, the City of Rock Springs has, has worked diligently in trying to keep the numbers down, and when it gets, push comes to shove, it's just my opinion that the City of Rock Springs should hold its own, and, uh, others should consider reducing their amounts, uh, based on per cap and then what their projects are. I think some, uh, need to be maybe re- reviewed, uh, just my own opinion.
And I was informed that they do, they're all in agreement in regards to the total cap amount being somewhere between eighty and a hundred million. So, with that, if you add up all the, the projects, it's cutting about a hundred million total.
That's, uh, quite the cut. So, we'll have to have some conversation, but, um, I'd like to hopefully see others having those conversations as well. With that being said, um, I entertain a motion to approve the council committee and board reports, and place them all on file, including, yeah, discussion. We do have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just gonna move us on to correspondence, uh, item number one, a thank you card from Sweetwater Regional Cancer Center for the city's participation in their Pink the Town Pink. Uh, two, a thank you card from the Red Desert Humane Society for the city's sponsorship of their two thousand nineteen Great Gas Beer Ball Event. Three, the thank you card from Sage Elementary for Mayor Como's attendance at their two thousand nineteen Veterans Day Assembly, of which I can say was outstanding. And four, a letter from Bridger Coal Company regarding the two, two thousand twenty blasting schedule. Councillors, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the correspondence and place on file.
So moved, your honor.
Would you have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just gonna move us on to the bills and claims, and item number one, are the bills and claims for November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Your honor.
Councilwoman Wendor.
I move to approve the bills and claims for November nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
We have a motion to approve the bills and claims for November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, item number two, the salaries for November seventh, two thousand nineteen, councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Wendor.
I move to approve the salaries for November seventh, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for November seventh, two thousand nineteen, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record show no opposed, just gonna move us on to the new business section of our agenda. Item number one, under new businesses, a request from the finance department for approval of the City of Rock Springs Fiscal Year two thousand nineteen audit report from McGee Hernan Vies LLC. Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Tate. We do have a motion to honor this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And once again, you guys did a great job, appreciate your help. Item number two, the request from the mayor's office for approval of employee Christmas bonuses.
Your honor.
Councillor Savage.
I move to amend this request to include a twenty-five dollar bonus for the remaining part-time employees. Total, this will cost around eleven hundred dollars.
Councillors, we do have a motion to include the part-time employees', uh, Christmas bonus, twenty-five dollars, for a total of, um, eleven hundred and seventy-five dollars. What's your pleasure?
I'll second.
Councillors, we have a second, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will include, uh, the part-time, uh, bonuses for twenty-five dollars for the Christmas bonuses. Councillor Savage, I think that was a great one. Um, and item number three, the request from the Parks and Recreation Department for permission to apply for two grand for the Wind and Mud and Drop-In Hockey Tournament from the Sweetwater County Joint Travel and Tourism Board, councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve this request.
We have a motion to honor this request, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four, the request from Louz Incorporated for liquor catering permit for the dinner holiday party on January tenth, two thousand twenty, from four PM to midnight at the Sweetwater County Events Complex, councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Wendor.
I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show y'all opposed. Item number five, the request from Louz Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Simplock Christmas Party on December twentieth, two thousand nineteen, from four PM to midnight at the Sweetwater County Events Complex, councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve the request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number six, the request from Louz Incorporated for liquor catering permit for the dinner, Mine Rescue Dinner on December sixth, two thousand nineteen, from four PM to midnight at the Bunning Hall, councillors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Shalata.
Move to approve this request.
Do you have a motion to honor this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven, the request from Louz Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Steelworkers Local thirteen-two-one-four Christmas Party on December thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, from four PM to midnight at the Sweetwater County Events Complex, councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Tate. Do you have a motion to honor this request, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number eight, the request from Louz Incorporated, who is going to be very busy- Yeah. Through the holiday season, for permission to transfer their liquor license to Camera, to cater the Camera Operations Christmas Party on December seventh, two thousand nineteen, from four PM to midnight at the South Lincoln Training and Events Complex, which is gonna also require the approval of the Camera City Council. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Wendor.
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to honor the request, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Just gonna bring us on to the resolution section of our agenda, which we have one, Resolution two thousand nineteen, one fifty-eight.
A resolution accepting and approving a contract with Rapid Fire Protection Inc., Adtech Alarm, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor, and Matthew L. McBurnett, a city clerk, to execute said contract on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Shalata.
I move to approve Resolution twenty nineteen, five eight.
Councillors, we do have, uh, a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen, one fifty-eight, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's called, roll call.
Councillor Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendor.
Yes.
Halter. West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata. Yes. Mayor Como.
Yes. And councillors, with no further business-
Your honor.
Oh, Councilman West.
Sorry, had to interrupt you there, but apparently Commissioner Shanefield's ears were burning, 'cause she just emailed, and you are correct. The next six penny, uh, meeting to present commissioners will be Thursday, December fifth, at one thirty.
It is one thirty.
One thirty. Uh, I believe it's at the-
At the chambers.
Courthouse.
Courthouse.
I guess that means I'm out on the business council Cheyenne trip, so, if anyone wants to join, you're all welcome. But I'll be there on the fifth.
Got a lot of things stacking up that day, uh, but we will divide and conquer, because both are very important, important to this community, uh, important. And, uh, December, December fifth is the date, the fifth, for the, uh, City of Rock Springs to present their grant, uh, application for the first security bank building, which we've put a lot of, uh, blood, sweat, tears, uh, into. So, we'll divide and conquer, and we'll work it out, and we'll attend both, so, appreciate that, with no further business to come before this governing body. This meeting is adjourned.